Okay, Cindy, are you, can you do roll call? If not, I'll just do roll call for Cindy.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, you can. Want to do a roll call, Cindy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes. I voted on something.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes, here.
Maureen?
President, here.
Who was the last one?
I did, Mark, Joanne, Maureen, Chris.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, all accounted for and present. Next thing on agenda is Bill's payable, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve his payable in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll support that.
Motion to support any discussion questions. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Maureen Borkey?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Next thing is our supervisors report. Brace yourself. First thing I want to do is welcome our new trustee, Maureen. Hi, Maureen, wave hi to everybody.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here with us.
Happy to be here.
As I usually start out with the high water report. And actually, I checked it today, it's down to where we were last meeting. A few days ago when I wrote this, it was up a bit, but in the six month lookout with the core, they just came up a couple, three days ago. It shows it going up and starting to go up in January and the normal spring track, but not as much as it has in the past. And right now, they are saying we will be eight inches below where we were this last year. Which puts us at a level where we were two years ago. You remember that when we thought we had high, high water. So, still gonna be high, but hopefully not as bad as it was last year. Um, COVID, it's a problem for our county. I wanted to give our first responders big kudos. Because I mean, I see it on my phone, it comes through, we have calls and it's a known positive address, you know? And both police and the fire department, they're going in and dealing directly with these people that are positive cases of COVID. And in fact, a week and a half ago, there was an instance where both police and the fire, they had to actually give CPR to a positive person. And you know, both, both the husband and the wife were positive. So, it's a in the second I gotta admit, somebody here, the second wave is definitely zapping us. Last week, we had around five firefighters out, I believe, it's two, two members now. They were positive. When I wrote this, we had one full-time police officer in quarantine, we actually have, I believe, two positive and one in quarantine right now. Last week, half of our water department was out. And with COVID, and now we only have one person out now, they, they've all recovered. One had a little bit tougher time. And he's still out, but soon should be back soon. So, I just want to make mention that, you know, it's definitely tough on our first responders, our water department. And and you know, as far as I can tell, they're you know, they're doing what needs to be done to help people, but it's, it's a challenge. So that's all I'll say right now. And right now too, I think more than ever, we have to try to support our local businesses as much as we can. I myself have been trying to order out every, every, as much as I can, actually. Of course, I like to eat out too. So, so win-win for me. But I think it's important that we try to keep these people going, so. Started on getting quotes again for our garbage pickup, our contracts, so done with the end of March. I do have a meeting with one contractor this coming Thursday and setting up a couple more to get us some quotes. So we're definitely starting working on that. And I still haven't got set a meeting with Ira yet to review the OHM report on the sewer interceptor, been working on that. They got hit with COVID pretty good, their offices were closed, I'm not sure if they're open yet or not. So they were, they were pretty, pretty consumed by, by people in quarantine and actually had, had the virus. I have a year-end audit meeting set up for this Thursday and hopefully it will be reporting to the board. If not, our next meeting, the one following. And also, we have a special board meeting set up for tomorrow at five via Zoom. We're looking at bonding out our unfunded pension liability. And we received rough numbers that I shared with the board. And so far, it, we will save about, according to these numbers, nineteen percent or just over a million dollars over the life of the bond. Basically, it will represent around the sixty thousand dollars a year savings for the township. And if everything goes right, we're probably looking at around April timeframe for it. It's a complicated issue and the presentation is probably going to take about twenty minutes. And to do this with, on this meeting with all the agenda items, you know, we'd all be glassy-eyed by the time we got to it. And this needs our board's attention. And we'll have that on Zoom and I'll post it, post it too. But the, the whole thing, I mean, this is why I decided, or I wanted to explore this. We can bond out for about between two, two and a quarter percent interest. And we make between six and a half to seven and a half, eight percent interest with MERS. So basically, we're gonna bond out for two and a half percent or whatever it is. And we'll be making six and a half, seven percent on the money that we, we put in the MERS. And none of that, it makes a lot more, then we'll be pretty much funded. And right now, for budgeting with the whole variations of the market and the economy and this and that, we have a lot of fluctuation in what we pay out every, every year in the pension liability. And it's impossible to budget for, this will be a constant steady that we can, could budget for a lot better, so. That's the push behind it and we'll have that before us tomorrow. The bike path repair is scheduled for to happen this week. I talked to Cordis Brothers, they're gonna be there and and do the buildup where it was underwater with the grindings and roll it out and stuff. The rest of it will probably happen, a majority of it will probably happen in the spring. As you recall, we got a forty thousand dollar matching grant to do this and oh, I think we're about twenty-eight thousand in, in costs so far. And so we'll have some extra if we need to do anything more on that going forward in the spring. And I just wanted to mention again that we receive our my phone's talking to me. That's weird. Just want to mention again that we received the grant from the Michigan Trust, the Michigan Dean, our trust fund grant to purchase the nine acres on Harson's Island for a nature park and a handicap kayak launch. And that was like eighty-five thousand. And then county kicked in fifteen thousand, they split our match for it. So that part's done. Or that part is done, we gotta work on developing it. County Park, so this is, this is really good news, you know, everyone knows we've been working for a beach park, I've been on it for over eight years. And to acquire the property across the street from Catch Twenty-Two. And I submitted the application to the trust fund, the DNR trust fund. There is like seventy-five applicants. And for our park here in Clay Township, it was rated number two highest priority. And they granted the one point four million dollars to purchase it. And that actually included the White House behind the real estate office, which we're closing on December fifteenth. And so we're probably looking at next fall actually receiving that money and the county taking possession of that property and start developing it into a first-class beach park. And we're working every day on the Saw Grand and the Sewer Interceptor project. And oh, and today too, assigned paperwork to close out the two FEMA grants we got a couple of years ago for the fire department. So Cindy said, here, assign these, and I did, and that, so we passed, you know, the, all the paperwork and audit on it and that, those are closed. So, any questions? Okay. Fire chief report, Chief George, you're up.
Thank you, good evening, chief's report for November two thousand and twenty. I attended one, one meeting in the month of November, that was the Harson's Islands St. Clair Flats Association. Fireboat Two was pulled out of the water for the year, so we winterized that and that will be stored at the fire station. The new flagpole was installed at the fire station on the island, you guys get a chance, take a look at it, they did an excellent job. We plan on running some, we have electric there, but prior to get with Cindy to get a permit, we need to redo the electric for the light at the island station for the flagpole, so we'll be working on that. PPE was bought for the fire department and the police department and it was delivered. The equipment was removed off of engine three and then fit testing was conducted. One other thing, I also had three interviews to bring people on, and I have one more application, so hopefully next board meeting, I'll be able to bring board members people on.
Hey George, you want to mention about the work you're doing with the septic field over on the island too?
Okay, I talked to Mr. Chat, I guess he's the one that does the, the board underground. And I got a quote from him and I'm working with Dennis right now to get that agreement signed with the, the Lions Club and the township, so then I'll bring that to the township for final okay. I'm working with Ryan Jessup on the island to get a twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallon tank, it's a double tank. One side's gonna hold the, the solids and the other side of the tank is gonna hold gray water, which will be pumped over to the island.
What that is, is instead of us putting in a whole new septic field for the fire department, I mean, there's not much water usage there. We're gonna utilize the Harson's Island Lions septic field that's already there, they have plenty, plenty of capacity to do that. So that saves us a lot and will help maintain that with, also with the Lions going forward.
Yeah, George, you're, yeah, chief, Mark here, are you all set with the verbiage on the agreement?
Yes, what I did, Mark, is I took yours and then I gave it to the township attorney and they kind of just polished it a little bit. They didn't add very much, but they just put a couple of things, I had to put the land descriptions of both the Lions Club and the fire department on it, on it. Paperwork. But I appreciate it, everything looks good.
Okay, any more questions for George? Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Public comments, do we have any public comments?
Yes, I'd like the Carol Sampson.
Hey Carol, how are you? Please state, state your name and address for the record.
Carol Sampson, six oh three nine Point River Road. Okay, I see the house has been torn down from Bergeron's house, but M twenty-nine there by the Pearl Beach Pier. And we had been talking previously about a fence going up and you had said that when the house went down, you would look at the fence. You had any plans for the fence?
That, that will be brought up before the DDA, I know I've had discussions with the board members about it. We don't have specific plans as of yet. And truthfully, with these Zoom meetings, I tried a couple with the DDA and I don't get a quorum. So I'll probably have to wait till, till the executive order is over and then have a meeting with the DDA. We'll be reviewing that and a couple other issues and like I said before, we'll, we'll have to, we'll, we'll let the planning commission look at it also. And the idea is taught, and I've talked to the new property owners via email. And we'll probably put up a privacy fence up to where the house was and from that point on, do some kind of a landscaping or a green barrier for that.
So is the green barrier going on the riverside or on by Legos? Back towards?
No, it would be, it'll be on the downstream side.
The riverside?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll have a, you'll have a six-foot fence, how far down and how much of the green part is gonna be the green area?
To about where the house was and then from that point down, it'll, it'll be like a landscaping type shrubs or, or a low, low fence, you know, with rocks and stuff, it'll, it'll be like a landscaping break.
Okay, so is it gonna be something that people can't get over and walk into the private yards on the other side?
I'm not sure about that, but I'll definitely define where the, the property line is. And that's something, I'll, I'll discuss the details with the property owners there and everything and with the planning commission and our building department once we, we get there.
This what I consider this a neighborhood project with the fence, not just the, the property right next door. So I'd like to be involved with, with everything with the fence.
There's no problem with that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, and I had sent you an email that you sent off to Rod about the property lines that are going down on the map, so I'll have, I'll get with Rod. I realized, like he said, that there's no boundaries on the map, but there are actual properties that exist on that map. And I would like to know, starting at the six oh nine that you guys purchased, up to what point, there's like, going west, up to what address does the residential stop?
Yeah, I sent you his reply, right?
Pardon?
I sent you his reply, right? Yep, okay.
I'll have to get, yeah, well, listening to the meeting, oh, Mark Bouchard's there. Because I know Rod sent back that there's no boundaries on the map because it's just plain. But there are actual properties that exist on that plan.
Right.
And so I would like to know where the residential transition ends, because I know it starts at the property Clay Township purchased and it goes west.
Right, we'll see if we can get you a better answer.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? No more public comments. Well, hang on, I got one person waiting. Hello, public. Hang on. Hi, we're in a public comments, do you have any public comments at this time? Any public comments? No more public comments, okay, we're gonna move along. Consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the board meeting minutes of November second, special board November seventeenth. Check reports, thank you, communicate, Mary Avers. Request from Cindy Babish for her M Parks membership for five hundred and fifty-five dollars or conference for two hundred and forty-nine, which is virtual this year, so there is no lodging. And assessing annual association membership of three hundred and thirty-five dollars for Sherry Lawton.
Here we have motion to support. Does anyone have any questions or anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye or wave aye. All right, motion passes. Next on our new business, we have new hire on-call substitute building inspector. Paul, help me out, Gary.
Smirik.
Smirik, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I assume you know Paul, Paul, Gary?
Yes, absolutely, just in an ongoing effort to make sure that we have coverage in our department. And I thought it'd be a good idea to bring on another inspector. We do have Greg Furtah, our electrical inspector, also does our building too when I'm not available. He will be our first call as going forward for sure.
Okay.
He'll be coming in after that, just to make sure that we have full coverage. I have worked with Paul in the past. When I worked at Roseville and St. Clair Shores, I worked closely with Paul, a very competent inspector, and I think he'd be a great addition to our team.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or I can entertain a motion?
I'm assuming that this is a job description that is authorized by the job itself, not the person, but the job itself is authorized by the board?
Yeah, it's, it's to stand in a substitute building inspector.
Okay, so that's, that's in the procedure book?
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire Paul Smirik for the on-call substitute building inspector Clay Township.
All right.
Okay, we have motion to support any more discussion or questions?
Hey Paul, this is Chris, are you currently licensed in the state of Michigan?
Yes, I am.
Oh, hey Paul, I didn't know that was you.
How you doing?
You are, are you a licensed building inspector as well as a licensed electrician?
No, not electrician, just a licensed building inspector.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for Paul? Too bad we can't embarrass him in person.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's always fun. Okay, no other questions? We have motion to support to hire Paul as our on-call building inspector, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, congratulations, Paul.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next, I have a request to waive our, our water fee for the county water, beach park property that we just got the grant for, there's a brown house on it in the middle of the property. And they, the water usage is zero. But they, they have other charges associated with it and they asked me to waive it because we don't want to pull the tap out because eventually they are going to put in bathrooms and other things that will need the water and sewer hookups. So they asked me to waive the, the bill and I feel funny doing that myself, I thought I'll bring it to the board and get board approval to, to waive that, I mean, they're so nice to give us fifteen grand for our park on the island and, and everything. So I, I'm looking for a motion to waive their water bill as, as long as their usage stays zero until such time as they need water hookup for the beach park.
How much is the water bill right now?
Uh, it's a hundred and eighty
six ninety-eight.
Yeah, a hundred and eighty-six ninety-eight.
And that's what we're going to assume?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, we're just gonna, we're not gonna pay it, we're just gonna wipe it clean, so they don't have to pay it.
Hello, board members, I will make a motion that we waive the fee for the water project or property in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents until further notice.
Support.
Okay, motion support. So essentially, I, like, until they have water usage, then we'll, we'll put them on and I'm sure they'll be a good customer of ours as soon as we get, get things going in the park. Any more discussion?
And just say that John did approve that as well. And what we're actually waiving is water debt and sewer base and water base.
Right.
Not the actual water usage.
Right. And John, good point, John was in favor of doing it also, so head of our water department. Okay, hearing, not hearing anything more. All in favor of waiving the water fee for the county or for the property the county bought for the park? All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have assessing the, the St. Clair County near local agreement for a designated assessor. Annual, is an annual fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for a retainer. If I could start out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we reject it.
You think we could get him to waive it?
Probably not. Can someone approve my motion so I can talk about it?
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion to reject it. When this was first brought up to me, I'm thinking, okay, it's only two hundred and fifty dollars, it's a bit of a money grab, well, you know, we already pay for assessor. And I I was like, whatever, you know? And, but soon after, because I'm in kind of a leadership role of all the St. Clair County supervisors, I, I received about six, seven calls from supervisors of other townships in the county. And they were fuming about it. And they, they, they they basically said they're not in favor of it. They Bill Dieter, who is the supervisor at Grant Township, he's also the vice president of the Michigan Township Association. I talked to him about it. And he did some research with MTA and he said, of all the counties in the, in the state, I believe there's about eighty-some, eighty-one or two or whatever. There's only three counties that are charging the entity, the fee for this. It's a state mandate that the counties provide this, but all but three counties, St. Clair being one of them, it's just absorbing the cost. And what it is, is that, and I did talk to and I did talk to the county assessing also. Justin up there. And he has about, he acknowledges, so there's two or three other counties that are charged passing along. He said he put out advertising to, for, for someone to be the designation, the designated assessor for the county. He only received one application. So by default, she got hired. And so basically, she's gonna have to pay, or she, she's gonna get a retainer about between $7,000, $8,000 a year for doing all of them. But then if she's called upon, and what happens? For this to take action, we have to have an audit done by the state. Our assessing. And we have to fail it. And then they will come with they give the, whoever it is that failed at the entity on a chance for corrective action. And if the state doesn't like the corrective action that is presented, they will call in an independent auditor to fix it. And that would, this, this, that would be this person. And then we would have to pay, and they are quite high rates. It's so much per parcel. Like you know, they average between 15 and $19 per parcel. We have 17, or over 7,000 parcels. And then then there's a cost above that, so much per hour and everything else. So for it to pass, there's 31 entities, cities and townships in the township. For it to pass, they need a majority to vote yes on it. One hand is only $250, the other hand is the principle of it. And a lot of my fellow supervisors think this is a cost that the county should absorb and not pass it to the entities. That's my spiel. I'm gonna vote no against it, but it's, like I say, do, you know, it's two, it's only two, $250, but it's more on the principle.
Well, I had questions written all over my document here. Issues that you just brought up already, and I don't like it. It's like you're trying to shove something down our throat that we really don't need.
Right.
However, if it is a state statute, I don't even know if it is, then why do we even have to vote on it? But that's the size of point. Who, and, and this, and this designated Kelly Tim. I mean, who is she? We don't, you know, if you're gonna vote somebody in, it's gonna spend money, and we're gonna sanction it. I think we should at least be a part of the hiring. Or at least, in that suggestion, if you follow me on that.
Right, it is a state mandate that the county has to supply somebody. The county needs a majority of the entities to approve this. This is why we have to vote on it, for them to charge us. I talked to the city of Algenex, they voted for it. They said, yeah, $250 is not worth arguing over it. But like I say, it's, it's another little loss of local control. If you will.
Who is, who is Algenex Assessor? They have their own?
Yeah, actually, I think the county does it for them. They pay the county to do that. I remember when we were way back when we were looking at replacing Barb, I, I called up the county, hey, you wanna do our assessing? They said, they wouldn't even give us a bid because we're too difficult and too big for them. But I believe that they hire someone through the county to do theirs. So that's why they, you know, they have to get us to vote on it with a resolution just so they can pass it along to the 31 entities, cities and townships. I guess I probably know quite a few townships that are probably gonna reject it. Mostly the smaller ones. So.
Yeah, it doesn't serve any purpose as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
So if we reject this, are we rejecting their designated assessor, or are we just rejecting the fee?
We're rejecting the fee for them to charge us. We understand that they, they mandates they provide a designated assessor. But we're rejecting the fee for them to charge all the entities in the county. The, the cost of it.
Let me ask you this, Artie. Of the three things on your supervisor's report, the beach project and the kayak launch, how much was county involved in any one of those projects? Significant input?
The bike path, not much. The, the beach park, yes, a county park. And the, the property over on the island for the kayak launch. Yeah, they, they gave us 15 grand for that. You know, parks and rec.
Yeah.
It's county parks.
Comes from the county money, right?
Well, yeah, no, it comes from our tax where we pay a tax for county parks and rec. We're assessed a separate tax for county parks and rec. The kayak launch and the the match for the property, the actual kayak launch and the, the beach property is, is all county parks and rec money. This is the general fund of the county. And another bit of information too, like I say, the only time we would, anybody would need this if they were in trouble with the, with their AMAR, it's called audit. Which the whole county's gonna be AMAR, have an AMAR audit done in 2022. The last time anyone in St. Clair County had an issue was about eight, 10 years ago, I understand, was Kimball Township. Where they had to call in, they had to hire their designated assessor to fix the problem. So it, it doesn't, it's not gonna come into play that often. We talked to Jeff Bohm about it, the county head of the county commissioners, and he just said, all right, you know, I, I just saw assessing, I handed over the assessing department and our handling it. Kind of, you know, didn't say a whole lot on it. And and so like I said, I called up the assessing department and they said, yeah, basically they're passing along the costs. So like I say, it's more of the principle, but I you know, the $250 is not gonna break us. But I'm planning on voting no because I, I kinda gave my word to other supervisors. We, I would, and I can't speak for the board, so.
You want a motion?
I already made a motion to deny it.
You made, okay.
And, and we got some support, so.
Who supported it?
I did.
Yeah, so you could talk, yeah.
Yeah. So any more discussion? I will do a roll call vote, or does anyone have any more questions?
If I ask you one more question, who originated the document? Who sent this to you?
It was accounting, accounting assessing for the county.
The county assessing sent this to you?
Yep.
And did they follow that up with a phone call to you, or did they just email you?
No, they just, they sent it to me. I actually, I'm not sure if I got the email or Sherry did, they threw it on my desk, and like I say, my initial response is, ah, another money grab, you know? But then I, I started getting phone calls from all the other supervisors, and well, I better take another look at this. So.
What page is the actual $250 fee that everyone has an issue with on?
The cover letter, each municipality in St. Clair County will be retired to, required to pay a retainer fee of $250 annually to the designated assessor.
It's on the page right after the water bill.
Oh, maybe I passed that. Okay, I see that.
Second last sentence. In the the board members. From Sherry.
Yeah.
What happens to the county if by the end of December, all of the town, all of the municipalities do deny this interlocal agreement?
They, they will, they will have to absorb the costs themselves. Is their mandate to, to supply us with, or to, to have a a designated assessor? It's the county's, county's responsibility. Which they, they've done. They just wanna pass the cost to us, which which that's what the vote's for. Does someone have something?
Vote.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote.
Maureen Boy.
So to deny it, you say yes.
Yes, to deny it.
Okay.
Crystal Regan?
No.
Kristy Hilton?
No.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? No. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Okay, motion passes 403. I knew it would be close. That's okay. All right, next. We have Police Rave Smart 911, 200, 2,500 annual, come out line 207760. Chief Michael, coach, you're on.
All right, as I put in my memo to you back in 2017, this is something that was implemented in the state of Michigan, which Central Dispatch and our dispatch got on board with. At the time we got on board with this, it was something that was being funded by the state. I was just given information back the end of October that no longer come November, the state would not cover the charges of this anymore. So our options were either discontinue the service or cover this ourselves. I think it's something that we need to continue. We, we've got hundreds of people within our community that have already signed up for this service. And it's actually a pretty good service that I think is catching on more and more. I know if you go on our website, there's a link there that takes you to it and explains everything. It's a pretty easy site to use. You can go in and pretty much put any information that you want into that site. And with that being said, if, if for any reason you do have to call 911, this would come up along with this, our computer aided dispatch, and it would give any information that you put in there to our dispatch center, whether it be special needs, special instructions for your home, maybe you have a a lockbox to get into your home. All these different things can be put in there, even when it comes down to medical allergies or special needs for med, for medical reasons. And like I say, a lot of people have taken advantage of this. I know Central Dispatch did make the decision to continue on with this program, and I think we should do the same. Obviously, I have to do a little bit of finagling budget wise around. This is something that I didn't see coming. But I think this is something that is good for the citizens, for our community.
Yeah, yeah, and what, I'll, I'll do another article on our newsletter in the back of the water bill and remind people sign up. You can, you can get specific and put things like, you know, I have two kids that are on the upstairs floor. I have a cat and a dog, and this is their names. So if there's a fire or stuff, they know exactly, you know, who to look for and where and it's a lot of good, good information in case there's an emergency. Am I right there, Mike?
Absolutely. I think George would agree as far as that goes to, that not only is it gonna help us out, but it's also gonna help the fire department out, EMS out as well, if there are any special instructions. Making, you know, any kind of response on our end can be definitely quicker if there are any mitigating circumstances, even as far as entry into the residence, so.
Well, due to the vastness of Clay Township and the positive atmosphere that this system brings us, I'm gonna make a recommendation and/or a motion to approve the Police Rave Smart 911 system, $2,500 annually, coming out of line number 207000760.000.
All right, all right.
Yeah, motion support. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, oh, we have the MERS defined benefit adoption agreement addendum. Cindy, you wanna talk about this a little bit?
Well, I'd received an email from MERS asking us to just review that paperwork that was part of this board packet for each of our divisions. I included it for one division, but it's the same for all of them. They're just doing some updated records, giving us an opportunity to change things. This paperwork reflects no changes. An example of things we could change is right now. If employees get payout due to their collective bargaining agreement, for example, for sick pay not used, they do not have MERS applied to it. It's just considered a payout. We could change that to any any, anything that we pay them, we could put MERS against it, and it would count towards their earnings. It does make a little bit harder to do payroll. But right now, all the union agreements have any cash payouts without any MERS applied to them. So basically, we're just reaffirming what we already are doing.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
So we'll discuss this tomorrow?
No, no, this is this is reaffirming that ba- basically the, the options that are available and, and what we're doing.
I, I hear you. I hear you.
It's pretty much a moot point, Joanne, because all positions are closed. But they're just, they're sending it out to every municipality, asking them to please go through and update, and then also because the positions change hands, you know, potentially with every election, they make sure everybody's on board doing what they, they believe they know what they're doing, so. A review.
We had this four years ago. So it's a every four year review. It might be two years, actually.
Yeah, this is Mark. You know, I wish I had a question, but I don't.
Make one up.
We have to make a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So we'd have to prove it for each of the divisions. You know, they just need to know that the board had looked it over and, you know, agreed with it. So I did the example of how it's gonna be filled out for the one division. They're all the same because they all have the same stipulation, so.
Have no changes since the last time we voted on this?
Right.
There's changes since the inception of these agreements.
I'm sorry, you cut out. Did you say there's no changes since the inception?
Right, yep. Nope. Whenever they were created, they've been the same ever since, so.
And any change would be subject to union approval and, and, you know, that whole, whole thing. And like Cindy did mention, there's very little we could, could do because all the, all the plans are closed.
I'll make a, the, any more questions? Well.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, we will. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the MERS defined benefit plan adoption agreement for the DPW. You're gonna have to read the whole thing, huh?
Yeah.
Adoption agree, okay. Uh, I'll approve, uh, make a motion to approve the MERS defined benefit plan adoption agreement addendum DPW before two thousand eleven, uh, DPW after two thousand eleven, command, police patrol after two thousand eleven, dispatch prior to two thousand eleven, and dispatch, dispatch after two thousand eleven, general office, elected officials. Any support? The end.
Do we have support?
Or?
Okay, we have a motion and support to, uh, adopt the agreed addendum for MERS. Any more discussion? This isn't a contract, we got to do a roll call.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, this, the drinking water asset management grant summary and proposal. This is, um, and I, we have Anthony on, uh, on, uh, our meeting, uh, from PCE uh, to ask or answer any questions. Wave hi, Anthony. Anthony, it was called D Wham, but I, I like Chrissy's, uh, she, she calls it D Wham. So we're going to call it D Wham. Instead of D Wham. And this is basically works similar to our SAW grant. Except, uh, there, one difference is the SAW grant had ten percent matching. This has zero percent matching. And, uh, what it does is, uh, we can, is, it's, and you can jump in, Anthony, if I'm messing up. It's, uh, as a result of the, um, plant thing with, uh, uh, lead, looking for lead. And, um, Anthony thinks we got a pretty, pretty good shot at getting this. Um, the only thing is we have to have it all turned in by the end of the year, and Christmas is almost right around the corner, so we got to get working on it. It will help us out with our, our, and it goes three years, the length of three years, is that right, Anthony?
Right.
And, um, it will, uh, help us out with a lot of the engineering and, and other things if we do our, uh, replacement water line, which we want to do in a, a, a year or two along M twenty nine. Um, and, uh, the cost for PCE to do the grant is seventy three hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty cents. Want to jump in, Anthony, take over?
Yeah, just, um, so the, the seventy three hundred is the, uh, the cost to write the application, right? And then, um, in that, uh, obviously the application costs, uh, as well as administrative costs would be, uh, reimbursed. So it's, uh, so, just like you said in the SAW grant, it's a reimbursement project, uh, program. Uh, D Wham is, is also a, a reimbursement program. So, uh, you expend the money and then, uh, you submit a drought request and, and you get reimbursed. The difference is, is because it's a drinking water, um, asset management, uh, grant, um, the focus is on the lead and copper rule, like you said, and primarily service lines. So, um, and it's lead and galvanized. So, and it's been something that's been a rule, I believe, since the nineteen, mid nineteen eighties. And, um, we're required to be doing a certain percent of, of our system, um, every year. So this sort of gives us funds to, to try to get over that, not have to worry about it again. And, um, there's a point ba, it's a point based system, so it's not a lottery. Um, so if you look at the amount of money, um, there's fifteen million dollars um, for reserve for communities under ten thousand population. So my feeling is, is that you're going to have a lot of similar scores in that, in that type of town. Um, so, you know, we're trying to do some things to, to give us a little bit of extra points. There's a couple items in the, in the, in the scoring. But, um, some of the, the takeaways from the grant for the township would be, this grant pays for a vector truck, that, a purchase of a vector truck. Up to twenty five percent of the purchase cost, uh, if you're just doing it on your own, or if you share it with a, with another community, then they pay for fifty percent of the, uh, purchase of a, uh, vector truck. And so, um, Ira is obviously, uh, expressed an interest in, uh, in working with Clay and, uh, in taking advantage of that, so. So that would give, um, the township to do their own, uh, potholing, because, uh, when you, we're going to, the three years is going to be, uh, a lot of that's going to be investigation of, uh, different areas where we think there's a likelihood of lead or galvanized, uh, service, there's any parts of the service line. So, um, and then obviously the vector truck is, uh, is the townships afterwards, which could be used for other utilities. Specifically, like the, the interceptor, uh, has a quite a, a big, um, cleaning requirement. And so that could be very helpful. Other than that, uh, it does cover software. And because it's a hundred percent grant, there's a zero match. Uh, some of the softwares we were considering to use in the SAW grant, um, because we're just in year, finishing year one now, if we're awarded this grant, um, we'll, we'll know in three months, well, we'll know in March, March sixteenth. So we would be able to then, uh, purchase those softwares in the, uh, in the, the D Wham grant. Um, and those are ones I, I want to present, um, in our next live meeting, um, next year. So that would be our, um, asset management software and, um, the rate methodology software. And so, um, so that's pretty much the, uh, the gist of it. And, uh, yeah, like you said, the timeframe's pretty tight, so.
Anthony, I guess to me, what do you think we would be seeking? It probably wouldn't be the full million dollars, what, three, four hundred thousand, or?
Probably, yeah. It won't be the, I'm pretty sure it won't be the full million. And, uh, we have to consider, you know, so the, the more, usually in grant writing, the more you show there's some match involved, um, the higher your chances are. I think the vector concept is going to take care of that aspect. And then, you know, we'll, we'll figure out from that point, uh, the cost. And that's going to be straight, you know, hourly costs that we're going to consider. We already have, from our water reliability studies, we already have a good idea, the linear footage of the system that we're going to be attacking, so we can estimate pretty close, um, what it's going to take.
So if we did the vector truck with Ira, um, basically we get a truck for twenty five percent of the cost that both can use. That's going to give us a lot more points.
Yeah, that's going to help.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Does anyone have any questions for Anthony? I'll entertain a motion. I can't hear you, Chris.
Sorry, guys. PCE Anthony is looking to get paid seventy three hundred and twenty two dollars to write this grant for us?
Yep.
Okay. Guarantee us at least a hundred thousand dollars worth of grant money?
Well, it's still competitive. Uh, yeah, so I, I don't know if I could do that, but, uh, um, I definitely can guarantee we're going to do all the points that we can get for the township, so.
Do, do you know if, uh, is there talk about, uh, once the, this pot of money is up, uh, them funding more like they did with the SAW grant?
Right, so this is the, so the, the announcement from Eagle was the clean water, uh, grants. There's five hundred, over five hundred million. And this is the first grant program to come out of that. So this is, uh, uh, thirty six point five million from that, uh, five thirty five. So it got program names for the other programs coming down the line. Um, we just have future deadlines for those. Um, sewer is unknown. There, I think they need to fund it through the legislature, but they have about two hundred and fifty million funded through water programs. So, and this one's, uh, pretty applicable to us, and, uh, the other ones are a little bit more, uh, water treatment related. So through this, this would be this, uh, announcement.
So how much is the grant we're applying for?
We can apply for up to a million, but I don't believe that that, that's what our project that we're going to do will be. Um, we have, we're going to do.
Tony, have we seen that project yet?
Sorry?
Have we seen the project yet, the specifications for that project?
Yeah, the, the, the D Wham?
Yeah.
So, so those activities that are on the, I, I think I wrote them on my, uh, summary page. Um, the grant activities that we're interested in doing. I think it's in the, in my proposal there, um, D Wham grant activities. So these are the activities that we're going to, um, estimate. We have to provide them with, uh, linear footages, maps, and, um, and quotes and, and backup data to, for them to see how we came up with the number we're asking for.
So has Ira committed for you guys to write this grant for them already then?
Yeah, it's, it's on their, uh, agenda as well.
What's your experience with, uh, grant applications? Have you been doing it for quite a while?
Yeah, uh, so we wrote the SAW grant for Clay Township, which we're in the process of doing now. And, um, yeah, we've been doing grant, uh, writing, especially Eagle Grants, um, for quite some time. My boss probably been doing it for over twelve years, I'd imagine.
How you feel? Our ads are pretty good. We're going to get at least a hundred or something.
I, yeah, there's, there's some extra points such as, um, so if you remember, um, it was a two, twenty eighteen, I came to the, I think I came to the board and I said, um, we need to do our water, um, asset management plan. And we did it and submitted it to the state. Well, now they're saying there's a extra couple of points that gets, gets us over the top if we've done that. So most people just, you know, because it was kind of a requirement that never got, uh, enforced strongly. But we did it because they said we were supposed to do it. And, um, now that's going to pay off because, uh, we can submit that to the Michigan Infrastructure Council, MIC, and that gives us a few extra points. So, um, so those are the kind of things I hope that will push us over the edge. I just, I just think that all communities under ten thousand are going to have a certain similar amount of lead and galvanized, uh, service lines, because they're similar in age, and, and they were built out in a similar timeframe.
Hey, John, what do you think, the Boyer?
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's something we absolutely should pursue, and just a couple other items, um, that we're already in the process of doing. Um, for example, GISing our system, and also, um, any capital improvement planning or engineering. We know we've got the M twenty nine water main replacement in the near future. So these are things we're going to do anyways, but this, this grant would cover and offset that cost to us.
Under the, um, grant activities, it says revenue, structure development, rate software. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so I was going to do a presentation next month for, on, on that, but, um, so, uh, they'll pay for, and there's actually another grant coming out in January as well, called an AP grant. Uh, but, uh, it, it's a, they'll, they'll pay for software, and, uh, we've had good experiences with, uh, software, uh, doing software for rate methodologies. So that software, um, allows us to project the, the water systems costs and work with the CPAs to, to, because the, one of the main components of an asset management plan is the capital improvement plan. And so that capital improvement plan has to get input somewhere in order to determine if we're, we're bringing in enough revenue with our rates. And so the, the rate study software allows us to do that, and we get to put in our, um, numbers we've calculated, and then the CPAs can get in, and they can also input their, um, their side of things. So, um, that's, that's what that is. It's a purely a, a rate study software.
And what's it called?
Uh, well, the one that we've had experience with is called Water Worth. And that's in, uh, New Baltimore.
And you can use that for other, it's my understanding that you can use that for other rates as well.
I mean,
Like modules?
Baltimore, they're also, they put their roads in there, and, um, so yeah, it's pretty versatile.
Cool.
Any other questions or anything? Okay, we have motion and, uh, support, right?
No.
No? We, we have motion?
No.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a mo- Make a motion to approve the, um, D Wham grant summary and proposal from PCE for seven thousand, let me out here.
Eighty hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support.
Do we need to amend the budget with that as well?
We will have to. We'll have to. It'll be under, uh, engineering fees. Um, I put in my little cover letter that, um, um, underwater, I think I had three, three thousand in it. We'll have to bump that up. Um, and that's line item five nine one zero 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 eight zero seven.
So are we, are we amending it right now?
No, no. We don't have, we can't, we can't amend it until we approve it. So, um.
We do have motion and support, and it's under ten thousand.
Yep. So, everyone, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none.
How will we let Ira Township know?
I'll call up Jim tomorrow and tell him, hey, we passed it, and, and they're supposed to do the same. He, he was pretty confident it would go.
Okay.
I talked to him today about this, and, so.
All right, and Anthony, maybe you can call on Tuesday night or Wednesday and follow up?
Yeah, I'll get ahold of Chris, uh, over there and Ira.
Or maybe Chrissy could, could communicate later.
Put in a good word for us?
Yeah, maybe. So. Okay. All right, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have resolution as we do every year. Uh, it's twenty 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 five to opt out the eighty twenty agreement is act, uh, Public Act one fifty two requiring all state employees to pay, um, I think it's twenty percent of the healthcare, and we have the option to opt out. And all of our collective bargaining agreements, we've have told them that we will vote to opt out. So it's always this meeting, this one or the next one that this comes up. And, uh, it's, uh, to pass a resolution to opt out of Public Act one fifty two.
So board members, I would propose that we propose a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty five to opt out of Public Act one fifty two, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Part.
Yeah, motion and support. Any questions on this?
Yes. Down on roll call votes as follows. Sandy Kupel, this should not be down on that.
No, she shouldn't. This is probably last year's.
Should be Maureen, no.
Yeah.
You see that? Cindy, did you pick that up?
Yeah, I corrected it up top, Joanne.
Okay.
We'll correct it before it goes to print.
Yeah, she did.
Just a template. Apologize, Maureen.
I figured it was, but.
I saw that earlier, and I was wondering, well, maybe that was just last year too, but I saw it was right up top.
You'll copy and paste.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you both spots on the next one, though. Yeah, I got you both spots on the next one though.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Oh, let's see, where are we at? Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have Resolution 2020-26, setting the water rates for 2020 slash 21. No change. I think this is the third year in a row that we've hardened upon frozen water rates. There's no change in it, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Dash 29, establishing the water rates for 2021 as no change, the same as 2020, which is 489 for a thousand gallons per quarter. And the water supply charge will be $34 per quarter.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
So on bullet point number eight, our, our resolution numbers don't line up. I don't know if that's a big deal or if that needs to be addressed, but it's 2020 Dash 26. Our meeting sheet, it's 2020 Dash 29 on the actual resolution.
Yeah, the agenda is correct. 2020 Dash 26.
Gosh, you guys are on it, man.
I missed that.
Yes, Joanne.
I'm going to sleep at the switch here.
Okay, so we have Resolution 2020-26. We have support and motion and support to accept to maintain our water rates as they are with no change. Everyone understand? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Maureen Borey?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
All right, next we have to retain Christine Anderson of Seabird and Zalaski, is that it? PLLC for our building and zoning matters. And this came about because our, our current council really wasn't addressing our needs in a timely matter. And I think Gary, Gary will chime in, but we've used Christine on a couple of things and she's been excellent. And and I know Shannon has worked with her also in different communities and he highly recommends her. From what I could tell, I think she, she's a little pit bull. So I wouldn't wanna go against her in court, so we want her on our side, so.
Yeah, Artie, does she, she have a prefects as Esquire?
I believe so.
That should have been put, that should have been put down here with her.
Yeah. And but Gary, do you wanna chime in a little bit?
Yeah, what we have, we've worked a little bit with Christine so far. Very impressed. Like you said, pit bull is a good adjective for her. Whenever we contact her, the response comes back to us very, very quickly. And yes, our current council has been lacking in communication with us for sure. So the fact that we have an open communication with Christine has been just a plus so far.
And Michael, you have some, Coach, you have some experience with her too, right?
Yeah, we've been working with Christine for quite a few years as far as the, she does all the local prosecutions for Ira Township for us, so. And she's fantastic. Can't say enough about her.
So if nothing else, I'll make the motion that we retain Christine Anderson for, as our attorney for building and zoning matters.
Does she interface with the general Clay Township attorney?
Is what?
Or is she replacing him?
She, she's replacing them. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion or questions? Quite, quite honestly, we just had really poor, poor responses on several building issues with our Kelly Law Firm, you know, with the building department. I know Gary and Shannon both are very frustrated with it. And really the whole building department. So that's what spurred this on. We tried her out on a couple of cases. She was excellent and some conversations with her also. And she seems like she's on it and very highly motivated.
I wish we could use her for general matters as well.
Well, maybe we will.
Well, that's, that's what I was referring to in my comment, Artie.
Right. We, we have some, I, 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 we have some cases. But hearing as a pitch hitter, you know, we have the Piper's Act hearing coming up Wednesday. And, and Kelly Law Firm, they're handling it pretty, pretty good from what I can tell. So I'm, I, I would wait to pull that trigger just yet. But definitely for building and, and zoning matters, we need to do it sooner, not later.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of retaining Christine Anderson as our attorney for building and zoning matters signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Well, we got through our, our agenda remotely. Yay us. Board member comments. Cindy Valentine?
Oh, I just wanna say welcome to Paul and to Maureen. Nice to meet both of you guys. Yeah, for the first time meeting. And everybody stay safe for the next 20 days.
Okay, Joanne?
Um, I would like to give a shout out to Cindy Valentine and her deputy clerk Janet Garaka. And if you were looking at any of the checks written out in our check reports. There were all lots of them for our volunteers that helped during a an election that went just over the top this year. So I, I, I thank you for all your hard work and all the volunteers that worked at it.
Thanks, Joanne. It was, it was definitely a try. That's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, big kudos.
Very good.
Chrissy?
All right, so I'm not gonna be in attendance at the next meeting, so I have one informational announcement and then a little bit that I wanna say for the end of the year. So North Star Bank, the Algenack branch has agreed to collect current season tax payment on behalf of Clay Township. Beginning tomorrow, December 8th, property owners will have the option of making their tax payment at the Algenack North Star Bank location at 900 Point Trumbull, Algenack. And that's the only branch that will accept our payments. If you would like to make your payment at the Algenack North Star branch, you must provide your full tax bill. Payments will not be accepted if you do not have your tax bill present. North Star will receive your payment and provide a stamped receipt. Those payment records will be sent to the township each day and tax accounts will be updated with that payment information. This agreement will allow property owners to make in-person, contactless tax payments Monday through Thursday from 8:30 until 4:30 PM and Friday from 8:30 until 6:00 PM. If you have any questions about this, please call the office and you can get ahold of us in tax by pressing nine. They're going to ask you for contact information at the bank and that is in case we need to contact you about that payment. So that's my bit about the taxes. And then I just wanna take a moment to recognize the year that we have had. As 2019 came to a close, the issue on most of our minds was high water. As it seemed that the water was going to continue to go up, we started working together as a team to devise a plan for our second year of record high water levels. Then March came and we were thrown into a global pandemic. Again, we worked together to try to keep our citizens and township employees safe. From office closures and reopenings, elections, health orders, high water, tax seasons. We have been able to count on our team to keep township services steady and available. I could not be prouder of our staff who have worked steadily during these uncertain times. I am truly so, so thankful for them. I am also proud of our community's willingness to give to our Downriver Goodfellows last year. And I'm happy to say that the giving attitude has not stopped this year, even with an uncertain economy. So far, we have collected $550 for Goodfellows this season. And that's just in people walking in or mailing in a little bit of extra money with their water bills. We are collecting monetary donations. I meant to say, we're not done yet. If you have the means to make a donation, we're still collecting. We're collecting monetary donations as well as new hats, gloves, socks, blankets, toys, or books. If you would like to donate, but you don't want to come into the office, just call and we will come out to the parking lot. Or you can utilize the drop box if it will fit through the slot. Unfortunately, we have a very high number of late water bills right now. Even though the township is not charging penalty and not scheduling shut offs, we have a lot of residents who are having a hard time paying their water bill. And we all know how important it is to have access to fresh water. Some lost their jobs or are laid off or have a sick family member. So if you'd like to make a donation toward a Waterville. We are more than willing to put your donation toward a family or individual that might need help. Let's all use these last few weeks to reflect on all the things that we have to be thankful for. The beautiful place that we live and our community full of giving and caring people.
Well said.
Christie. Just let you know, I'll see you tomorrow, but we did the No Shave November in the police department, so we got another 175 dollars to add to that, so. I'll get it up there to you tomorrow.
And just to reiterate, we, we started this program last year where people wanna kick in a few more bucks when they pay their water bill or, or anything, taxes, anything. They, they can do that and, and it goes to the Goodfellows. And we have a little bell every time someone does it, it rings. And unfortunately, it's the same bell that, that ring at lunchtime, so I get hungry throughout the whole day when I hear that. Chris or Regan?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna follow up on Christie's coattails. The theme, it's the right time. There are several programs in our community that I feel like are gonna really suffer this year. Because of the pandemic, because of the current economy. And I just encourage people to reach out and seek your favorite charitable donation. And if you can, if you can spare anything, there's the Algenack Community Food Pantry. A fantastic organization that keeps people in our community fed. There's the Our Lady on the River Parish system, who helps with hats, gloves, coats for the needy. The Downriver Goodfellows, you can donate online or you can donate at our township offices. Woodside, Woodside Church does a fantastic job of donating and staying involved in the community. Or the donation, you can round up on your tax bill, you can round up on your water bill. And the township offices will see that it goes to needy family. So I think it's really important that if the Lord has blessed you and you were in a position to be able to do something for somebody else, now's the time to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, very good, Chris and Christie. It's a lot of good input on the charitable events going around town. And it's, it's all good things. Have a planning commission at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. That'll be a Zoom meeting. Congratulations to Paul for accepting the position as a building inspector. And welcome, Maureen. Glad to have you onboard. I'm sure we're gonna have many, many hours of fruitful meetings. Thank you. Congratulations to Mike for his new grandbaby.
Yes. Do you have any board member comments, Maureen?
Just wanted to say that I'm excited to be here and I'm impressed with everything, the staff and all the, all the different donating places that we can lead people to. And I just wanna get involved. So thanks for helping me and being patient with me. And I'm learning into many new things here, so I'm excited to be able to share that.
Good, great.
Very good.
Yeah, I'd like to, Mark, Mark mentioned there's a, a planning commission, may Wednesday. I, I actually been talking a lot with our planners and our the, the chair of the planning commission, about specifically about the master plan. And they, they invited me to attend this next meeting, Mark. So I'll, I'll be on that Zoom meeting too. And they're, 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 they're going to, they were, if, if the board, board doesn't know, they were going to send it the planning or the, the draft of the master plan to us to approve. And the way it was done and some of the things that were put in right at the very last minute and everything. It, it wasn't good. There were some issues that I personally had and I'm sure the whole board would have. It was of the process. So they, they, they are able to revisit it at their next business meeting, which is Wednesday. And so what, what, what comes out of that is I, I, I don't know yet, but they're going to look at it and and then change it or not. It's a planning commission question. And then it will come before us to approve or deny. And then also we got the Piper's Act hearing coming Wednesday. It's been taking a lot of my time this week. But yeah, on a brighter note, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Paul as our building inspector and Maureen as our trustee. I, I can't wait till we have a in-person meeting so we can welcome you properly. And, and still I, I feel like we owe a good send off to Sandy Kupfeldt, who is a great trustee too. And, and we'll do that at our, our, our next in live meeting. So I'm, I'm excited for both Maureen and Sandy. And as far as, you know, our community and giving, you guys are so right. I know there's a food giveaway, I wanna say the 19th. I believe this one is at Woodside. They, they move them all around. I'll get more information on that. And I heard rumors of another one the first weekend, January. And I, I was thinking depending on how, how we're doing, you remember when this first started? We, we started our community action plan and we got a bunch of service groups involved with volunteers and, and everything. And everything through the crunch, it really helped out a lot of people. And we did direct a lot of people to the food bank and a lot of donations too. I, I think we're gonna be okay to Christmas, but after Christmas, I'm a little concerned. We may have to fire that up and, and get it going again. It's gonna be a long cold winter, especially for some of these restaurants. I, I worry about our small businessmen, so, and, and women. So that, that being said, I, everyone be safe and thanks for coming. So that, that being said, I, uh, everyone be safe and thanks for coming. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support, support. We're good. Thanks a lot, everybody. Have a, have a good, uh, couple of weeks and anything you need, let me know.
Thank you.
Bye to tomorrow.
See you at five, right? Correct at five?
Five o'clock tomorrow. Well, I'll send the link out again.
You'll send the link, okay, great.